Councilman Durkin?
Here.
Councilman McGuire?
Present.
Councilman Spitzer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Frank?
Happy to be here.
Councilman Bunch?
Here.
Councilman Monacino?
Here.
Mayor Francie?
Here. Uh, Mr. Bradshaw, uh, without the Harley door, would you lead us in the pleasantries?
(laughing). Early war.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Uh, under public announcements, uh, business continues to be extremely good and historic for it. Uh, no one seems to know why, uh, this is, but we are here for that. Call the public, Karen?
Lepuski.
(inaudible) Mayor, Council. Um, most people, most attendees here tonight probably think that we're here on a Tuesday night because of President's Day yesterday, but I know it's because Council wanted to be here to help celebrate my birthday, so I appreciate that. I have no place else I'd rather be. I just wanted to very briefly clarify a couple of things that I've been reading about myself over the last few weeks. One of which is that I am somehow a, uh, a stooge of the local newspaper, uh, and that, Don Storchek is somehow pulling strings, but as you can see in his strings, he and I have never had a conversation in, in our lifetimes, and, uh, my decision to run, uh, in this recall election was mine alone and, uh, made the decision, uh, for myself and, and for the people of Cave Creek. Uh, the other is that I've been, uh, reading that I rarely have ever attended council meetings, but, uh, I, I just want to say that I, uh, I think I attend more council meetings than the vast majority of Cave Creek residents, and, uh, in fact, was glad to hear that the Vice Mayor was so excited to be here today. There was a period of a couple of months, uh, last year, towards the end of the year, where I was attending more council meetings than he was. Uh, so, anyway, I just want to clear those things up, and I appreciate the consideration, and, uh, thanks for joining me today.
(inaudible). Matt, Simone?
I just wanted to say how happy I was, uh, how well Bike Week went here, and I retired and moved down here just for that, presented, uh, how much people liked the atmosphere down here with motorcycles, and how well everybody accepts you. Uh, other than that, that's about all I got to say, and I thank you all.
(inaudible). Chris Tom?
I just wanted to take some time to thank everyone for this last weekend. I think it really went very, very well, the road closures and that, and I just want to say thank you very much. We're working real hard on making sure that it's safe in this town, especially of all the businesses that we're bringing up for Bike Week coming up here in about a month, so I just want to say thank you for everything you've done and the patience you've had for them to be working with us. Thank you.
And do I have a speaker's name?
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Thank you. Uh, good evening. I just wanted to thank, uh, the Thursday, February 12th participants in the Cave Creek Council debate. Uh, four people showed up, four people didn't. Wasn't surprising. I have now, this is just a comment, it's not really a question. I thought it was a magnificent night. I was inspired. People were, had a lot of brevity. Uh, people wrote to the Caped and answered every single question. I want to thank you guys. It was a shame everybody didn't show up. It would have been frankly enlightening, so, thanks again. Thanks.
Does anyone else wish to call out a public speaker? Yes, Mr. Bradshaw.
I wanted to, uh, just thank Adam for all of your help and, as well as you guys in M- MCSO for a successful weekend. Uh, there was, uh, no incidences or any of that. It was very controlled. Uh, everybody, uh, some of the businesses that asked, uh, for this not to be parking bikes in front of their businesses and so forth, we were able to control that, uh, you know, with some of Adam's help, uh, as far as, uh, the keys being crossed, the items being dotted on our little map, and, uh, everything was a success. And, uh, we do have a busy month coming up here as far as, uh, you know, Bike Week for the state of Arizona, which I'm sure we're going to get a huge influence, uh, up here as well, and, uh, and with all of your help and so forth, we can, you know, make it a safe week for everybody. Uh, it also coincides with the rodeo and the parade and everything else that we did before, so we're kind of jumping a little bit ahead on, uh, some team planning and so forth to, with the, uh, barrier companies and the, and the off-duty officers and so forth to, uh, make sure everybody is, uh, is safe, uh, while, while they're all in town for both events. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Good luck with that. Thank you. Call the public is still open. (inaudible).
Good evening, members of the Council, uh, my fellow colleagues and members of the public. Will forgive me for turning my back on you for a moment. I'm going to address the public. Folks, you all know my name is Adam Trank. Uh, I'm the Vice Mayor of this town, and on the subject of a recall, uh, Mr. Lipsky, who just got up to speak, is one of the candidates. It's nice to see him here this evening. The other three challengers are conspicuously absent. I'm using that phrase because it was used to describe my absence in November, when I was actually out of town celebrating my grandfather's birthday, so I take some exception with the fact that Mr. Lipsky would like to take a stab at me in public for being absent in November. Uh, last I checked, this is an unpaid position, and I spend more hours committed to work for this community and correcting the wrongs that were, uh, borne upon us by the previous administration's malfeasance than I do sometimes working for my paying job. Um, that being said, the February 12th forum was a real success. Those of you who weren't able to attend, I would encourage you to look it up online. It is available online for your, uh, viewing edification, uh, and if you have further questions, please feel free to visit my website, adamtrank.com, or reach out to me. Ballots are in the mail, and, uh, I would certainly appreciate everybody voting. Uh, as soon as you can get to your mailbox, pull your ballot out, connect the arrows, and return it. Appreciate it.
Call the public is still open. (inaudible). It's not, uh, Council, the senior town manager, the Republican. Uh, two book items. Last time we met, we asked the community utilities, the network utilities last week. Uh, had discussions with finance director, the utilities manager, I believe, we'll be meeting up there again in the next week or two, and trying to firm up, uh, at least a basis to give you some consideration with their proposal. Also, uh, survey trail, we'll ask where the status is on that. Uh, we have draft easement with one of the neighboring, uh, lots. We're working on that, hoping that will be secured by the end of next week. We'll be on terms and try to resolve that issue too. So, since our last meeting, we've been working on those two issues.
Onto the consent part of the agenda. Here are four items, an appointment, and then three sets of minutes. The minutes are specific to the dates of January 12th, January 10th, and February 2nd, all of 2015. Motion approved. So moved, moved in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes are confirmed. Thank you, Council. On to the general agenda items this evening. Number one is council discussion and approval of expenditure funds to Cave Creek Museum in the amount of $10,000. Town manager, anything?
No, I agree on, I was going to defer to the museum.
Sue Neill?
Thank you, Sue.
And Sue Neill and Mr. President, both presidents of the Board of the Caped Museum. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmen. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your, for approving our special interest permit in 2013. The Caped Museum proudly presents and preserves the history of the Caped mining history, whose boundaries are loosely defined as I-17 on the west, Town National Forest on the north, east of Hannibal Mountain, and south of Pinnacle Peak Road. The museum has 2,479 visitors from October through December of 2014, 35% of Arizona and the rest of other states in the country. We also host a double 400 in adult and student tours. Caped Museum has been on TV and radio and print media and magazines, such as Images and Phoenix Home and Garden, with featured articles that bring people to the museum and other businesses in Cave Creek. We are also active on Facebook and Twitter. We are a 98% volunteer organization with only one and a half employees. Funds from the town help us to keep our doors open, pay for needed supplies, help us upgrade our exhibits, and preserve our collections, and thus the history of Cave Creek. I'm going to turn this over to the Board Vice President, Ron Roberts, who will be followed by Wes Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council, staff, and members of the public. My name is Ron Roberts. I currently serve as Vice President of the Cave Creek Museum, and I just wanted to add a little perspective to, to what it is that we do, and it's really talking about Cave Creek. You know, in 1776, we were becoming a nation. A lot of people don't realize that Spain was putting its hold on the town of San Francisco. Hundred years later or so comes Cave Creek. We've come a long way since then, and there's a lot of history there is that's around here to reserve, preserve, and we're doing a very good job of that. Wes is going to talk about the stamp mill, but that's just a small part of what the museum has done and will continue to do into the future. We, unlike many other towns, small towns that were developed in the 1800s are still around. Some of those are no more. They're ghost towns, some aren't even ghost towns. What we have is important, what we've done is important, what we will continue to do is important. I want to thank you in advance for your contribution to the museum, and thank the public for its support, and hopefully we will continue to grow and flourish as our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Wes Cooper?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Wes Cooper. I'm a Cave Creek resident and also a Cave Creek Museum member, and I've been privileged to work with the member of the Golden Reef Stamp Mill Restoration for over four years now. This terrific volunteer group has expended over 9,000 hours during the old mill operation. Our first official run was during the November 2013 Miners' Dinner fundraiser. Work continues on the mill today with crew gathering weekly. The Golden Reef Stamp Mill remnants were donated to the Cave Creek Museum over six years ago by Dr. and Mrs. Chapman from their property on Continental Mountain. Walker Trimble, whose parents' property is adjacent to the old mill site, said he played on structure as a boy. His mother, Mrs. Trimble, recently donated to the museum hardware from the deteriorated tram towers on her property. These towers delivered tram buckets for the mine further up Continental Mountain to the, uh, stamp mill site. The museum plans to erect these two tram towers on-site next to the stamp mill to demonstrate this ore-carrying capability. The Golden Reef Stamp Mill is the only active working stamp mill, ten-mill stamp in Arizona. The mill is also the only unit in the country working in the area of the original mining history, about 5.2 miles from its original site on Continental Mountain. The mill is now being demoed on a regular schedule available from the, uh, museum website, www.cavetreekmuseum.org, and the demos draw up crowds from all over the valley, locals and volunteers alike. The museum brings people to Cave Creek October through May. The museum staff and volunteers regularly, when asked, direct people to the Cave Creek businesses and attractions. The museum is grateful for the support of Cave Creek and the gods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
Are there any questions? But I also wanted to introduce part of the Stamp Mill Dream Team, and they have on their shirts, and if they stand up and turn around...
(inaudible).
And, obviously, Wes Cooper and Reggie. But are there any questions?
Does anybody have a question?
Yeah, earlier, uh, I thank you all for your, your presentations. You said there were 2,479 visitors over what time?
Yeah. Do you want me to go back there?
I, I don't know. It probably would. We're streaming this to our citizens.
The museum is close to the public during the summer. We reopen to the public on October 1st and through the end of May, and we didn't have the figures for just January, so those numbers that I gave you covered the 1st of October through the end of December.
So, three months, 20, almost 25,000 visitors.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Public comments is still...
Larry Went.
Mayor, members of Council, Larry Went, 6855 East Cave Creek Road in Cave Creek and Buffalo Chip's Loom and Stakeout. Um, I didn't make it within, like, your first couple of meetings of the year, but, uh, I'm, I'm going to make a commitment to not just come out and complain to you folks when it's something that I feel is delirious to the Buffalo Chip or business. I'm going to get a little more involved with the community and, uh, and, and supporting this great community. And, uh, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Cave Creek Museum. I, I would say of those 2,500 visitors the last few months, 2,000 of them had a pork sandwich at the Buffalo Chip. I'm kidding about that. I mean, but, but we do, on a daily basis, get people that come into the Buffalo Chip, and they're asking what to do around town or bragging about what they've been doing around town, and the Cave Creek Museum is very frequently in that discussion. So, I, I think it's a strong part of this community and, uh, a part that all of, all of the businesses should be more involved in speaking up for, uh, to you folks. And, and while I'm cleansing my soul here, a couple, a couple more things. Um, I, again, I get in here and, uh, talk to you guys when I think the noise ordinance is going to close us down, or, uh, the dust control people are down our backs, but I don't come in very often and just say, "Thank you." And, uh, I, I want to say thank you to this council. I get unbelievable support from you folks as a business, and I'm not just one or two. I can name, you know, individual members. Mayor Francie brought a couple hundred of his closest friends in, uh, a week and a half ago to the Buffalo Chip. They had a great time, watched bull riding. Vice Mayor Trank, uh, he's in regularly. He seems to bring a different, diverse group, uh, each time he comes in, and they're, they're not necessarily people that I know or locals or which, uh, see around often. Tom McGuire will probably tell you when Larry Went needs, uh, a different view on something than he normally has in his hard head, he calls Tom McGuire, and Tom McGuire gives it to him. So, um, again, I, I've had great support from all of you on the council. I really appreciate what you do for this town, and, um, this is the last thing. About 20 years ago, there was this puppy deputy chief from the sheriff's office that came up here and stood up, and, um, he was in charge of intergovernmental relations, and he was telling the town how, how they had to have the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, um, patrolling. He, uh, he worked for the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, and of course, you know, you, uh, you eat his bread, you drink his wine, you sing his song, and I was up here, I was this fellow pushing. Uh, I remember at that time, I, I don't know if I said it directly, but I certainly made, uh, light of the fact, you know, if you've got to cut the budget somewhere, uh, cut that raggedy marshal out here, you know?[1224.12][1224.12](laughing). Because, uh, the sheriff's office can handle all this. That has eaten at me for 20 years, because as I've lived here, I've seen that this marshal handles so much more than any Maricopa County Sheriff's Office deputy could or would, be it noise complaints, uh, building, building structure complaints, zoning complaints, and in no fault of the sheriff's office, but you just wouldn't get another law enforcement agency, including your own, if you had your own law enforcement agency that was, um, that was, you know, responsible for enforcing the, the 28 and 14 Code Law, what we call law, you wouldn't get it. You need this gentleman right here. Uh, he has been out so many times on so many issues and shown such depth of knowledge and understanding on how to handle these situations, and that's enough, because it's making me sick, but...[1289.83][1289.83](laughing). But, uh, I, I, I'm telling you, uh, you've got a good, a good fellow here, uh, a good system with a marshal and the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. You've got, uh, this is a great council, and just finally, I want to say thanks to all these people, not just all the volunteers for, uh, the museum, but all of these people that, uh, come in to the Chip that I know from the town, that put up with our noise and put up with our dust and put up with the things that, that we do. Uh, I truly appreciate it, and I appreciate this town letting me do it. That's it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Public comments is still open, calling gen five, number one. Okay, we will bring this back to council then. Um, I was awarded requested to, to put this on the agenda, so I'll make the motion to authorize expenditure funds to the Cave Creek Museum in the amount of $10,000. Second. Moved in second. Thank you, Council. Um, it, it, it was brought to my attention not too long ago that the council shouldn't be spending money with nonprofits, citizens' money, by the way, or taxpayers' money, however you wish to describe it. Actually, that point was settled several years ago by our legal counsel, and it's true, the council should not be spending money in that way. However, council can contract for services, and, uh, the council can do that with citizens' money. And what is the service that's being performed? Well, you've heard some of it described tonight with the previous speakers. Uh, the museum houses our history. It, uh, brings people to town, which, uh, which affect businesses in town, and we contract for those services. We put a value on the history of this community. Uh, there was a time a couple of years ago when the stamp mill was not there, and it was, museum took upon itself to make it a project, to bring it there, and now that is part of the museum, which is part of our history. Uh, so I wholeheartedly support this. Councilman McGuire, you had the second.
Yes, and I'd like to start by, made by giving a round of applause for the Dream Team and for everyone who has worked on behalf of the museum.[1443.87][1443.87](applause). I think I said it before, unity that loses its history has lost itself, and we have a very proud history here in Cave Creek. It's unique, it's colorful, and Cave Creek probably always will have those two characteristics, but it's okay, we're very proud of it.
Just to hope, uh, in, in your effort to capture the history of Cave Creek 50 years from now, I hope somebody puts something in the museum that addresses in some way, whether positive or negative, the westmost western town championship last of 2014.
I'd like to congratulate the people, all the volunteers who have spent countless hours and, and dollars supporting the museum. I've sent them a bunch of checks over the years myself. The last two times this type of expenditure has come up, I've asked for, uh, some sort of information from either the town or from the, the, um, organization themselves on what money is being spent for, and some sort of ideas on, uh, the finances of the, of the organization. Last two times I haven't gotten any, I haven't gotten any this time either. So, this is, this is your notice that this is the last time that you're going to give a yes vote to me without that.
Counselor, one.
Thank you, Mayor. In the spirit of full disclosure, I have been, I am currently a member and have been a member of the museum for years, and my congratulations to the Dream Team, um, for their work for the past four years on the Golden Reef Stamp Mill. Thank you, gentlemen.
Counselor, in five.
I like the museum, I'll go with you.
Vice Mayor.
You know, one of the downsides of going last is that most of the good stuff has already been said, but, um, I think it's worth noting that the museum is a really important part of this community. It's what sort of ties the community together, as already been said. It, it sort of is a place that highlights the history and tells the story of how we got here today. Um, I've been a supporter of the museum since before I was involved in sort of local politics and, uh, have continued that, um, throughout my service, so it's a good opportunity to point out that one of the first actions of this council was bringing the museum into a legal conforming zoning status, which it had been trying to do for over a decade to no avail with previous administrations. Um, that, I don't take that lightly. I think it's very important to give them the security and the staying power that they need, and, uh, approving this expenditure is going to be in furtherance of that, allow them to fund their operations and be a vibrant part of this community and preserve our history. So, I'll support it.
Tom, I heard Councilman Spitzer's, uh, request to coordinate with the head of the museum to make sure that is in evidence when this comes up next year. Ms. Catherine, this is, uh, financial, the board, please.
Councilman Durkin?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Spitzer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Trank?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilman Monacino?
Yes.
Mayor Francie?
Yes. By a seven to zero vote, unanimous, the motion is approved. Thank you, Council. Thank you for all that you do. On to the general, number two, council discussion and presentation, Water Advisory Committee on my desert gold water and wastewater strategic initiatives. Mr. Prince, aren't you representing?
I'm not.
Water advisory, the water advisory, but it'll be done well.
I'm one of three.
And yes, I understand that.
And we are representing the wishes of the Water Advisory Committee, of which I'm the chair. About oh, four years ago, I was retained by the County Recreation and Parks Department for the specific purpose of reviewing the water rights issues on Spur Rock Ranch. I've done that, I've worked with them, and in the process of filing specific, uh, documents with the Department of Water Resources that would allow the town to acquire somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, 1,800 town and parks, uh, 1,800 acre feet of water per se. In the process of reviewing the documents that I needed to review for this particular tour, I had an opportunity to spend quite a bit of time in the, uh, museum, talking with people, reviewing documents that they had. It was all very helpful, and I appreciate it. Uh, and at the same time, uh, I had a chance to review some of the issues relative to the Phoenix Mine Site, and, uh, I would like to give you a brief history on that. Uh, we have had that mine site in this town for a hundred and some odd years, beginning in 1970, 1870. Uh, at that particular time, the gold was on the surface, desert gold. All you had to do is walk around and pick it up. The deeper they got into it, uh, what they found out was the gold actually peered out, and that brought to mind... And I brought to mind a saying by Mark Twain, that a gold mine is defined as a hole in the ground with a fool at the top. In this particular case, the town's gone beyond that and has actually acquired the site. And in the process of doing my reviews, what I found was that the stream, Cave Creek, was actually a perennial stream up until somewhere in the neighborhood of nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty-one. Perennial means it flowed throughout the season, all year long. As a result of the drought that we had in the early fifties, we saw a diminishment of the flow. Now freely flowing, it occurs maybe two or three months during the winter day. It is still gold as far as this community is concerned. It supported a town in the late eighteen hundreds of between five and three thousand individuals. It had a school, it had a post office, it had many, many amenities that you would normally find in a mining town. The fact that it exists no more brings to mind there are several things that we need to be very careful of. One, as you've noted, and we've indicated this, it's the Desert Gold Program. Water, water is now the gold in the desert. It's a part of the facility and it's an important thing that we have to remember. Especially with the drought that we're in right now and the potential for having CFP water supplies diminished at maybe as early as twenty seventeen. Now, those would not affect us in this town particularly, but it would affect farmers that take CFP water at this position. Our objectives: eliminate utilities cost of nearly one point two million dollars, which is an annual loss; maintain traditional funding levels to implement desert gold; eliminate general fund transfers, that's where the one point two million comes from; use early savings to self-fund any of the improvements that we might talk about today. Our strategic objectives are safer water, more reliable water, lower costs, dramatically better operational performance. My goal is to keep the water rates the same as today over the next several years. Our current state of affairs: one, utilities have been operating at a one point two million loss each year for the last number of years. Water treatment plant has not been operated as designed. There are too many preventable equipment failures, electrical use and cost are far too high, excessive water losses have been routine, engineering staff is inadequate to achieve improvements, and water wastewater treatment plant inflow is too low. And as the last item, once the field staff has actually acquired the ability to maintain the leaks on a reasonable basis at this present time, we, those people are working on that particular issue at least one day out of the year. One day each day out of the year. So that's basically where we stand today. Our utilities, again, are losing somewhere in the neighborhood of one point, one point two million dollars each year. The deficit, again, is subsidized by the general fund. Wastewater flows should be increased to utilize available capacity. And high costs and inefficiencies abound. At this point, I'd like to introduce Tony Geiger, who will deal with some of the lessons
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Tony Geiger. I'm the carefree representative to the Cave Creek Water Advisory Committee. So this slide here talks about the water treatment plant is not operated as designed. Basically, we have a hundred and twenty-three million gallons of water that's being wasted as the plant as designed has a backwash recovery system that's being bypassed. That's the water that's used every day to pump up Cave Creek Road about fourteen miles and we use it to clean the filters that we clean our water at the plant. It's supposed to go through a sludge recovery system and then recycle back to the front of the plant, run through the filters, and brought out to the citizens and customers of Cave Creek. It's not been operational since it was put into service six years ago. I'm going to talk a little bit more about where that water's going in a minute. Ferrochloride chemical dosing is too high, so what does that mean? That means the chemicals that we're buying and the town is spending money on, we're wasting them. And where you see that is two places. When you go up to Rancho Mianas Golf Course and you look at that first pond and it's all brown and rust colored, that's ferrochloride, it shouldn't be there. The other place you see that is your second biggest customer of the water company is the town of Carefree. They've had, you're working with the Cave Creek Water Company, had to install filters on the treated water they receive and every week they clean those filters, they're brown, caked with ferrochloride. Generally, the water department doesn't have the needed analytical tools and skillset. Control systems are malfunctioning, the plant was designed to basically be an automated plant and is run as a manual plant. The staff currently lacks sophisticated repairmaking capabilities, so what you're doing is you're contracting from three different sources for those services. There's a picture of the pond, you can't see how brown it is. That little jewel right there, that is the back end of the ponds at Rancho Mianas Golf Course, and that's where we're dumping a hundred and twenty-three million gallons of water that we pump up Cave Creek Road, running through the ponds because the golf course has no use for it. So basically, the town is obligated to deliver approximately a minimum of a hundred and seven million gallons of water to Rancho Mianas and a maximum of a hundred and forty-six gallons of treated wastewater effluent. That water is water treatment plant backwash water. In calendar year two thousand and fourteen, it down-delivered a hundred, approximately a hundred and six million gallons of treated wastewater effluent, a hundred and sixteen million gallons of water treatment backwash water, and over nineteen million gallons of Vermish well water for a total of two hundred and forty-two million gallons of water delivered to Rancho Mianas. The golf course used just over ninety-four million gallons to irrigate the golf course. The rest of it went into their ponds and flowed out that pipe down Galloway Wash. Rancho Mianas was only billed for the ninety-four million gallons they used. It's estimated that we lost about twenty-five million gallons to evaporation from the surface and the other hundred and twenty-three million gallons we just flushed down the wash. The golf course has nowhere to put this extra water and they have no use for it. This is no fault of Rancho Mianas. This is an operational inefficiency at the water treatment plant. The excess water treatment backwash water was sent to the golf course, as I said, the plant wasn't running correctly. We hope to be able to capture about a hundred million gallons of that water for use in the town. So what does that mean? That's drinking water. And as Dr. Allen mentioned, we're in a severe drought and we're flushing a hundred million gallons of drinkable water down the wash. This represents about ten to twelve percent of our total drinking water in the Cave Creek Water Company service area. There'll be a significant cost savings as a result, it's about ninety thousand dollars a year. So the end result of all this is Rancho Mianas will get all the water they need and are entitled to. The town will recapture a significant amount of drinking water for the citizens of Cave Creek and the customers of the water company. And the water company realizes the cost savings. To me, a pretty good job by town staff figuring this one out. Utility company operates in emergency mode. Field staff deployed on leaks, customer service issues, and administrative functions. We've got to get them refocused on prevention and optimization. You had before you in previous, a preventive maintenance program and the water company is adopting that, but they need some help. We've got to get the staff duties transitioned to prevention. And what this means, we eliminate the code reds, where we almost ran out of water this summer, catastrophic equipment failures, and near miss incidents. That's got to stop. The town is only as good as its water. We run out of water, all the great stories you hear about the businesses and the town flourishing, that goes away. So we just have a little slide of some old equipment. Our electric utility costs are far too high. There's an opportunity to utilize some APS time of use rate structures that could potentially save sixty percent of our current costs. That's for the water treatment plant and the CAP pumps. Again, we pump all our water fourteen miles up Cave Creek Road. That has the potential to be a two hundred thousand dollar a year cost savings. Some pumps in the past have run as efficiencies as low as three percent. And that's, that's not talking about time of use, that's just the pump's never been looked at for years, it's in disrepair, it doesn't work right because our people haven't had the time to go out and do the proper maintenance and do the proper checks. So the idea is if we check the design and operation, repair the equipment, install varied full frequency drives where appropriate, those are subsidized by the power company, we have a chance to get even more savings. Excessive water loss. Water consumption, as reported to the Arizona Department of Water Resources in Cave Creek, is about a third too high. The goal is two hundred gallons per customer per day. We use around three hundred gallons per customer per day. Now, that includes all the lost water. So that's the leaks, that's the water we send into Galloway Wash, or if we fix a lot of that, that number goes down. Again, we identified a hundred and twenty million gallons a year being dumped for five years into that wash. That's over a half a billion gallons of water. And we're spending about eighty-seven thousand dollars a year to get it there and throw it away. We've got to modify the water treatment plant immediately. The pipeline leaks, we talked, we talked to David Princehorn about getting those priorities prioritized so we can get staff away from firefighting and get them to do some of this preventive maintenance and start realizing some of these savings. We want to expedite the replacement of leaking pipelines. The last bit, we're in a drought. And we, the water advisory committee has looked into a lot of different ways to deal with the droughts. And whether you think this is a mega drought like some scientists say, or it's just something that's going to go away, the challenge is if we get to a point where we have to react, we can't turn on a dime on these types of conservation measures, on new sources, we've got to start thinking about it now for a problem that may or may not happen five years from now. One of the things, the biggest thing we can do to save water is fix the water treatment plant. There's no other single thing that we can do that'll have as great an impact for the town. But we're also going to prepare a public awareness program and some online toolkits. And what that'll do is allow homeowners to do some self-audit. Most, a lot of the water is outdoor use, leaking sprinklers, running toilets, running anything. Those are the things that we can do that are easy. Because the other things that you do to save water are painful and expensive. Low-flow showerheads, restricted outdoor use, all kinds of things that the people of Cave Creek will not like and we don't want. So we've got to do these other things so we can get away from the real bad stuff. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bob Morris.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I'm Bob Morris, sixty twenty, Seattle Run South, and a member of the water advisory board. I'm holding in my hand a piece of equipment that is an impeller from a pump in Cave Creek. It doesn't take an engineer to show that this is extraordinarily damaged. It shows, to the practice eye, it shows damage not only in design, because it's had a lot of cavitation, but also it's been in service too long. It was not looked at in the timeframe that was needed. Now, the other part about this is you can obviously see it probably doesn't fulfill its function, which is to sit inside of a pump and turn on a motor, and this is what actually turns and pressures the water to the homes in Cave Creek. That three percent efficiency you saw, it's probably a pump just about like this. It is not pumping the water. I think that the amount of energy we can save is grossly underestimated. You can't have equipment like this and not pay a price to the town budget every year. And these problems have been overlooked for many, many years. Problems like this are really management problems, they are not a problem with the employees, the field employees, or the staff, other than the management officials. I'd like to point out that as the, as the engineering staff was until just recently, that our engineering staffing level in the town is lower than when these kind of problems were created. And they are not going to get fixed without a program and a process, a systematic method of determining where the problems are, checking the design, training employees on how to run pumps, operate pumps correctly, and then in the future, identify these and do the preventive maintenance so you don't have equipment like this in our town. The water, the town water advisory committee recommended the hiring of full-time assistant utility engineer. And Rick, there are two issues here. One is it takes a lot of front-end work to develop the procedures, the operating standards, vibration standards, the record-keeping, analyze pumps that aren't performing correctly, and set up a program upfront that is then implemented by the field staff. After that, that engineering work for that particular part really goes away unless you have a pump that's causing a lot of problems, but you probably have two or three years worth of engineering time to get the town water system straightened out. And the faster we get that done, the faster we're not going, we're going to get rid of the code reds last summer and equipment like this. By my count, in the last year, we've had five catastrophic pump failures out of about a hundred pieces of equipment in the town. Now, that's five percent, and that's catastrophic. That's not where a pump, some pump isn't working, these are pumps that had to be replaced. These are pumps that should last my lifetime. The word "old" should be banished from our vocabulary, talking about equipment, it either functions in an engineering fashion as it was designed, or it does not. As a side note, that most five pumps probably cost a couple hundred thousand dollars. When I put that amount of money against what the engineering talent costs to permanently fix this problem, the engineering cost is quite frankly trivial. Evidently, if you punch the buttons, it goes where it wishes. Here we go. Once we have fixed the leaking pipes, once we have straightened out the water treatment plant, you should have excess field staff time. And operating your equipment so this doesn't happen is where it can be redeployed. And I want to emphasize over and over again, this is not a people problem. This is not field staff not doing their job, this is not office staff not doing their job. It is a problem of not having the right kind of technical resources to set up the programs and systems that are well-known everywhere. These are common throughout this country, throughout any country that successfully operates process equipment. When the water treatment plant goes on time of use, which saves tons of energy that is off-cycle, so it'll be weekends and nights, and the staff needs to be redeployed so that we can use that rate structure. So the water treatment plant will run during periods of low power cost and be shut down during periods of high power cost. The expediting the water line replacement is a real key. You've got a crew that gets one leak a day, and so they go out and fix leaks all over the town, mostly up here, and then there's some spots over in desert hills that need it. We have money, we have money in the budget, sometimes it doesn't get spent. I think our committee is going to recommend that we front-load those leak repairs so that those employees can be redeployed into working on preventing the code reds and the catastrophic failures. Modern equipment is very complicated to run, and we need instrument, technology technicians to keep it operating. There's no sense paying the kind of money we spent on the water treatment plant just to have the equipment bypassed because no one can figure out how to keep it operating. And once again, there is, I am casting nothing on the employees. The employees do what they think they're supposed to do, and our employees are doing that. We just need to help them and guide them into doing something different and most of all, supply the resources they need to do the job that they would like to do. all, supply the resources they need to do the job that they would like to do. The wastewater treatment plant, it's running at thirty, thirty-five percent of its capacity. The other sixty-five percent we've already paid for, we're paying for every year, and these millions of dollars of interest payments that go towards building the water ranch that was put in service five years ago. There's a million-dollar loss right there. If you just fix that, that takes care of our one-point-two-million-dollar objective. We have dry sewer neighborhoods sitting, waiting for trunk lines to be constructed to them to get those flows into the system. And not only does the town get the revenue and the environment is better, but the higher the sewer system runs, the lower the potential for odors. Those higher flows reduce the amount of anaerobic activity that causes the odors, and it also flushes the lines. It's just a cheaper operation. We also have, the town also has a proposal or a feeler from Liberty Utilities who wants to purchase seventeen-and-a-half percent of the wastewater treatment plant, which is about twenty percent of Liberty's flow. And Liberty is a company that takes the, runs the sewer system in Carefree, and they send eighty percent of that flow to Scottsdale, but the downtown area is not going there right now. It currently goes into their own owned treatment plant that you see so many comments about in the paper as having all the odor problems and operation problems. That flow would be available to us if the town can cut a deal, and that is being actively looked at. My initial thought is, I expect the town should be able to do that deal. We have some advantages that Scottsdale does not have. Scottsdale is our competitor, but we have some real advantages there, and there's a very good chance that can happen. When that water comes online, that provides us more treated effluent. And treated effluent is gold. The treated effluent that we have now goes to Ranch Manana, which just about fulfills their needs. We'll have more treated effluent. We've got three golf courses up here, Boulders, Dove Valley, Ranch Manana. We could be the Saudi Arabia of treated effluent in the north part of the valley. So there are just so many potential items in all of these areas that the town has really no business subsidizing these utility companies. The last thing I want to say is about the Desert Gold. The name Desert Gold comes from the title of a Zane Gray book that was written in nineteen thirteen. It's very famous. We're here today, the museum has put their stamp mill in operation. A prospector went out to southern Arizona, and he was looking for gold, and he didn't find gold. He found water. And the title of the book that Zane Gray wrote in nineteen thirteen about Arizona was Desert Gold, because water is in fact gold in the desert. Now bring Bill back up to someone.
Gentlemen, the comment that I'd like to make is that none of this would have been possible if we hadn't been working concurrently with David in the process of identifying some of these items and then the option of where we could go with what we intended to present to you today. Our objective is to eliminate or reduce the utility's one-point-two-million annual loss that is subsidized by the general fund. We want to maintain traditional funding level to implement Desert Gold, and there are no increases in cost. We need to use our early savings to self-fund improvements, which would allow us then to transition some of our people into more preventative maintenance types of issues. At completion, Cave Creek will have safer water, will be more reliable supply, will have conservation to account for some of the losses that we currently are experiencing. We'll have lower costs. That will be CAP costs, transmission costs, treatment costs. We will dramatically better the environmental performance of our plants and our facilities. And again, water rates will save towns. Are there any questions?
I think there's going to be questions. If I ask councilmen questions, on behalf of the council, I want to thank all of you for the work that you have done. And you've not only pointed out the problem, but you're giving us solutions. Questions for councilmen, continue to go out.
I just have a couple of questions. With regards to the supply of water to Ranch Manana, it's not just the quantity of water, but there needs to be a balance so that in the summer, when the availability of water from our wastewater treatment plant is relatively low, that's also when the need for water at the golf course is particularly high. Does your plan occur for that discrepancy?
It absolutely does. One of the alternatives that we've looked at, one that we've been actually utilizing in the past, is the pumping of a mixed well. And that supplements the supply during the summer when they need more water.
And the other question I have has to do with the ferric chloride. And I think Mr. Guyer said that has a particular problem in the Carefree section of our water system. Why is it just the Carefree section? Is it something that's happening system-wide, or is it happening particularly in the Carefree section?
I think it has to do with elevations and settling of materials in the line. It seems that there's a portion of where the water goes to Carefree in the system that that chemical collects, and there's our groups of customers on that side that seem to be affected by that the most. So it's the design of the system, elevation, settling out, that type of thing.
Thank you.
First of all, gentlemen, thank you for this fine bit of work that you've done for the town. Regarding the need for additional technical work, have you been able to quantify that in, as a number of positions, or refine the, you know, the description, the job description?
It's going to be difficult to find it into that job description in the typical utility industry, but we have not planned it out, no. We have, I've been working with David, we have ideas on how to attack this as far as reorganizing field operations work, sending teams out to each pump station with a lot of pre-work with pump curves, with equipment diagrams, with flow rates, and send an operator, an engineer out there, do a study, check the design it to make sure it's still operating as designed, and also to see if the equipment's working. But it's, there's a lot of pre-work to be done. My horseback estimate is a couple of years' worth of engineering work.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Allen. That'd be a great one to bring back the Water Advisory Board to find some reasons. Can you give us an idea of the scope of the fix for the water treatment plant, cost, time that's involved in that?
Well, basically, our feeling is that in the process of doing the things that we have recommended, a significant increase in revenue will be generated. That revenue will then go to the improvement of the facilities that we have in place. It would also fund the necessary personnel that would be needed to move this forward. So I think it's a self-funding proposal, the way we're going to start to do it.
I might have misworded my question. The water treatment plant for the backwash bypass, what needs to be fixed? How much is it going to cost? How long is it going to take?
As a matter of fact, David would probably be in a better position to answer that question, but from my perspective in the discussion we've had, that could be fixed within two to three weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Monique, you have questions?
Yes, thank you, Major. Gentlemen, let me thank you for your work, Tony, Bob, very comprehensive. Dr. Allen, thank you. I've got a question here on Slide Two, on the upper-left-hand corner that says Two. It's my understanding that the backwash recovery system was bypassed because the original pump was badly designed. And so then the sludge recovery system didn't work for six years. Now that's, I mean, have we ordered the pumps? The proper pumps, to acknowledge the system? The pumps were never turned up? So essentially, if I'm not incorrect... Okay, please.
The original pumps that were installed failed shortly after they were installed in the original design. You guys at the last council meeting authorized the memorial pump that I asked for. Did I just run it back and repeat it? Either way, memorial pumps have been ordered, and I think we're only about a six-week delivery time.
Okay, thank you. If the ferric chloride dosing is too high, is this, is this just the, I'm not an engineer now, so I couldn't look at this myself. Does somebody just take something, pour it in, or is this the whole system measures and doses it out?
It's an entire pumping system with special metering pumps and a pipeline delivery system and injectors. The problem is the original pumps that were installed at the plant were overdesigned. They were designed for a future plant, a future water capacity that we don't have yet. So we cannot dial them down slow enough to actually deliver the fair rates that we need. So we're currently in the process of trying to define the exact pumps and do that. I've got a consultant who I sent here some information just an hour ago. He's hunting to try to find the right pumps right now.
The next point is lack of needed analytical tools and skill set. The analytical tools as equipment?
Yes.
Okay. So we've identified exactly what those analytical tools we need, what that equipment is, and that we have put a price tag on?
Some pieces identified this, and we have placed it all out. Again, this consultant I'm working with, we've prepared the assistance and providing the equipment to actually run the MA tests and train our staff in how to use the equipment.
Well, that point ends, and skill set. So is there then a question of the people, the skill set, the operators?
Yes. I mean, anybody can learn new things, and it's always good to expand your horizons. And we're hoping that in the training of our operators, they'll become better operators in the process.
Okay. The sophisticated repair capability is lacking. Help us, why is that lacking? The last, the last item, last...
It's got to do with the automated instrumentation, David?
That has to do with instrumentation technicians. We currently contract most of that work out. Obviously, you know, we have a system that's supposed to run in the automatic mode, which are supposed to turn on and turn off based on flow and demand. The system doesn't work that way right now. It takes very specialized instrumentation people who know how to get all these things to communicate and talk and continue to work properly. So we contract those services out right now. We don't have those services in-house.
I think that's all. Thank you. You're welcome, Councilman. Councilman Barnes?
A lot of questions we have to answer. The impeller that you've held up shows that that was a booster pump, I believe you said. Is that right? For moving?
Yeah, this is the third, the third at the Joya Ranch booster pump, right, at pump station.
So obviously, that's inside a housing?
Yes, the pump casing.
Yeah. If that were the variable frequency motors that we've been replacing them with, would you be able to tell by the frequency going and the pressure going out on the outbound side, whether it was blowing up and pouring like that or not?
No.
How do you internally monitor that? You're talking about the...
In order to monitor this, you have to go out with an engineer. In my experience, an engineer goes out with the pump curve. Everything revolves around the design of the piece of equipment. You measure the flows, you measure the temperature, you do calculations on the positive suction head, because this shows damage from not having enough of that. And what it means is little bubbles of water were vaporizing in this pump because it was overdesigned or it didn't have a flow restriction in the suction. And those little air bubbles are formed at the low-pressure area, right here, and then they collapse when they get around the outside. And they're so powerful that they actually pop chunks of metal off of there. It's a well-known phenomenon called cavitation.
Yeah, same thing on outboard mode.
It can happen on outboard mode, exactly.
So short of, an expert will now be looking at the, at the thing, there's no way of telling it's got a problem. Now, how many of those have we got in the system?
Well, there is a way of telling. There's no way of fixing it, but a skilled operator who's trained and who is managed to have his equipment running correctly all the time, and I have to say that our operators have gotten used to this way of operating equipment. I'll use the word horseback. Again, I'm a horseman, also there's nothing wrong with that. But they can hear this. You can hear cavitation. You can feel it. You can, on a pump like this, and in the town, David's bought one, you can take a vibration meter out there and measure the vibration velocity, which will tell you when this pump is failing. And one of the preventive maintenance items that we've recommended that David's been to work on is to keep a record on each important pump, and we have a hundred of them, so it's not a trivial task, but there's software to help you measure the vibration, and it tells you, the vibration will tell you when to take that pump out for maintenance. So you're not spending too much, you're not spending too little, you're golden lost. You're spending just the right amount to keep your equipment operating perfectly.
I guess that's all I know. Mr. Morris? I didn't mean that before you actually let me touch that piece of equipment. May I borrow it again, sort of my counsel? Have more of a curious feeling to start with, counsel? I'm...
It is from water, not wastewater, right?
Is this surface around here normally a uniformed surface of water? Okay, so it comes out with uniform diameter, the cavitation that we see there of this huge...
Along the outside, you see where the bubbles have collapsed. There's also, if you look in the hole in the middle, that's where the low-pressure water enters and the high-pressure water spins out around the outside. If you look at the equipment right there in the middle, you'll see it's worn away. That means it was probably, not only was it cavitating, but it was in service far, far too long. Because that's not cavitation, that's just probably erosion, because the water hasn't turned.
Thank you. Any questions?
First of all, Bill, Tony, Robert, and David, and the other members of the Water Advisor Committee, I want to thank you again. I know you've been thanked a couple of times, but I know how much time you've put into this because I've only spent a fraction of that time with you, gentlemen, discussing these issues, and it's been a lot. This is a tremendous work product, and I think it sets a foundation for a lot of other things that we now have to consider and do. My first question is from Mr. Princehorn. Last fall, one of the things we heard Mr. Morris mention this evening is we need to sort of set a benchmark for the operation of our systems and set up policies and procedures. We passed a resolution last fall directing us to have to do that. We had asked for it in December. We got an update first or second week in January that it was not going to be ready. It had already passed the deadline, but that you were going to need a little bit more time. How are we doing with that?
It's still work in progress. Today, I directed staff to rearrange the schedule at the water treatment plant so I can free up an individual to actually get somebody out in the field finally to start looking at all these different things. We have twenty-some pump station sites that actually need to be visited every single day. There's things that... There's things that go on at these places, and we have problems. Somebody eyes on every single day will help to circumvent some of these things. So the first steps to get somebody in the field. We get him in the field, I've already got some checklists prepared from the work form. Bob Morris and I are working on this vibration analysis thing. We'll have to train this individual in how to take these readings and where they would be taken, and we'll have to develop the manuals, towards all that. But we are moving forward finally. Hopefully, I'm going to start to see some change in direction here.
My next question is sort of a follow-up to that. I don't know if this is for Dr. Allen or for you, but it seems to me we're here in large part because even though we might have a significant number of staff relative to the size of our operation, we have an insufficient amount of staff relative to the scope of our operations, even though the number of customers we have in the company agree. I assume that's because of our topography and the size of our water service area and as well some of the aging deferred maintenance issues that we're having. My question for you is, is there money in the budget to start to increase staffing levels immediately?
That one would probably have to go through Peter first. I think he'd be the one to answer that. I know what I can work with, with the budget I have right now, but the diff...
I'm sorry, if I remember correctly, in January, when we were discussing budget for the utilities department, there were several hundred thousand dollars that were unspent. But what I'm hearing is if we front-load some of these expenses with additional staff, we might be able to resolve some of these problems faster and maybe put off some of the other things on our wish list, but we'll realize the greater savings quicker in so doing. Is, is that a possibility this fiscal year?
Right now, I mean, I just rented a condo three months ago. You get extra money for staff, so right now we don't have money for staff. First, I don't have the authority from the council to hire staff, but right now staffing levels are where they are. Most of the money you're talking about goes either maintenance or repair or capital improvement. That's the problem. Cave free for a number of years, I mean, we're talking five or ten years further back, has been the market, and things have, should have been taken care of and they want. So we're playing catch-up. This is a great analysis of that one. I can't turn these things, David can't turn these things, and one more engineer can't turn these things over in one day.
Sure.
And I corrected that plan, I know Dr. Allen said two or three weeks, not a chance. So we need some time to get those things in place, and I think we need to have a better plan, at least a laid-out specific plan, what we need to get done. My hope is for, when we go through the budget cycle, look at the actual boot to the grubs that we need to have in the field to do that. So I don't think we have the funding right now, because I actually want to hire the hot engineer, which we've proven we have him in the field. I think we have to have specifically identified folks who we want, whether both professional engineers or operators, that we have a, that we need on both of those. So I think that's where the hope should be in the next couple of months. And in the meantime, take care of some of those crisis areas that we've been working on.
If I'm hearing you correctly, Peter, summarizing what you said, we're looking at a several-month horizon and not just a several-week horizon. Is there any opportunity for us to reallocate some of that maintenance and capital improvement money to staff if the collective opinion of the, quite frankly, the experts on the Water Advisory Committee, if you know these gentlemen's background, and David Prinshorn, who's helped them identify these issues, if their collective opinion is that staffing is the issue, can you bring something to council in the next couple of weeks to give us the opportunity to address that?
Well, look at that. This is how we got in the problem, because we keep taking money from maintenance, we keep taking money from repair and capital. We keep taking those funds and using it for personnel. I've got my money to take care of those things. So that, that's my only concern with this. And right now, we operate at a loss, so we're trying to draw Peter to pay Paul sometimes to make this thing work. So we need some truth to that. So, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. Take a look, I just think, if you're looking for something you turned around, try to release. It's not going to happen. I think that David needs specifically saying, to say a clear, what he wants things to be done exactly. This is an overview plan, that's all I kind of see. I think you folks need to see something specific, exactly what we're going to do, and then allocate that. When we talk to folks in the field, good, bad, or indifferent, I don't need another engineer to fix a broken pipe, because we're always chasing that. But we do need another pair of hands up there, technical staff, to repair those pipes. And by doing that, we'll relieve a lot of those pressures, and we'll give more time to David and his assistant to tap on some of those issues, the lack of stock involved.
So, but here's my frustration, and I'm, and I'm going to try and pose this as, as a question for you. It seems to me there's going to be cost savings realized that can then be used to fund the maintenance and capital improvements. I guess the question becomes, how quickly do we realize those cost savings? It could take several months once we get the backflow system to their money else fixed. But I guess it's, it's another problem that we have to look at in the sense that to get that more specific plan to give us the direction also takes staff time away from addressing those problems in the field and kicks the can down the road a little bit. So is it possible that maybe we can accelerate this? And if, if necessary, bring it back to council at our next meeting to address it? And it seems like one or two more bodies with the, with the technical qualifications would be, would go a long way to helping solve this problem much faster.
And what am I saving money for? I, I, you talk about savings, and I don't disagree, timing use savings. Not that I've seen those numbers yet, because I haven't. But let's say that there's timing use savings, it's sixty thousand dollars, we don't realize those two...
Right, till several months down the road.
So, I mean, you don't have those immediate savings to put back into the system. So right now, I have to go rob someone else to pay for that. And I'm not comfortable doing that, because I have roads that need to be worked, I have, you know, planning projects that need to be done, can't take any more money from IT. So we're at a point where, um, you have to look at where your priorities, where your priorities really are, and focus on those. There's some things that need to be done, and I think this plan, she's helpful enough. For me, I need specificity. I want to know, I'm spending fifty thousand dollars, where's it being spent? We're changing the water tuner plant for the sludge and all that. I haven't seen the number, I don't know what those numbers are. I know I authorized that for David to fix that, and we're doing those things. It's just...
And I should point out also that it was not our opinion that any of these things were immediate in terms of being able to turn around and regenerate costs or regenerate funds. The project that we have essentially laid out for you is something that may take two years to complete, or even take longer than two years. A lot depends on what Peter can do in terms of the financing and how he can manage the, the staff and what needs, what, where is priority for it? And that's, we've only concentrated on the utility side of it. And that's, that's where we are.
If you could pick some line of black marble, we have beliefs up here all the building time. And if you could take care of that line, it would relieve so much. But that's not a simple fix, it's about quarter of a million dollars to do that. You want to refocus on a big project to take care, free up techs, time, engineering plant, fix that. Are the five major mines, that's our number one, that has to be cared. But we're always in crisis management. It's just, but it's, it's not David's fault, it's Black's fault, it's been sitting like that, it was ignored for such a long time. That's why we have pumps that were inspected, working one up. I mean, just, you play catch-up all the time.
I understand that. All right, I'm going to change the subject. I appreciate your answers, Peter.
Can I jump in and then come back to you later?
Yeah, of course.
I, I can feel the pressure that you are under, Peter. I, I know that you are proud of more than anybody, you're aware of the financial aspect of the town, which is why at the budget meeting the council just had last week, I told the department heads, to list their, give their wish list, but list their priorities, because we don't just have the utility department, we have other departments. Everyone's going to get something. But if the water committee and, and David is identifying this is just absolutely essential, or, or if there's going to be a cause and effect that's going to make a system that can desperately be there worse, then that, that, we have to find a... Let me ask a quick question, and I'll go back to the vice mayor. When council separated the funds that were, that had been sitting idle in spur of course...
Correct.
Council passed a resolution to, fifty percent goes for land present, to be used for land preservation, fifty percent for handling...
Correct.
Is that in any way help?
It always helps, because it freed up someone in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand dollars to do certain things. Those have to... I am not advocating that you make more money from spur costs.
No, no, no.
But it helps.
No, no. Don't, don't need that. You're talking about the holy of holy. About taking more money from spur costs. I'm saying that council passed a resolution.
It's helpful. Absolutely.
Vice Mayor, you still have to... I have questions, I didn't want to take this one. I can yield.
Well, I can wait. Go ahead and finish, Travis.
Just one last question. There's, and I know, Tony, thank you very much for your thorough explanation. I think those must have paid attention, understand the issues, but I'm going to ask just for the sake of clarity, because there's been a lot of misinformation about it in the public domain about the Rancho Manana matter. If the backflow preventers pump is fixed as we plan to fix it, and we stop sending the water treatment water to Rancho Manana that's been pumped into the wash, you're telling us, I know Tom asked this question already, but can you confirm again that Rancho Manana Golf Course is going to have more than enough water that they need to irrigate their golf course?
Absolutely.
Counselor...
Yeah, thank you, just, just one quick question. So you gentlemen have put forth a, a plan, actually a set of goals, outstanding set of goals, with obvious benefits. After listening to all the questions and where the money is or is not coming from or isn't available, it appears to me that we are presently so busy, we will never get this plan started, because we have several years of work ahead of us just chasing the problems that are endemic in this water system. So, and, and the words talent, skill, set, and whatnot were in your preservation. It's my observation that we, 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 we need to establish a different skill base for the same amount of money. And, or we will never get this plan started. I, I'd like to pose that as a question as follows. Is, are you gentlemen in agreement with that statement?
We are. I, I think there was a time when staff, for lack of a better word, was given very limited time. And I'd say people weren't doing the job, it's just, so sometimes the folks who are technicians are very good at what they do, but sometimes they're tight, and they kind of go off and do things they want to do. And that's why when David first got here, the water treatment plant had a variety of issues, like safety issues with wiring and the automatic system turned made manual for a variety of reasons that they probably didn't want to do. Over the past eight months, a lot of those things have changed, not a hundred percent. A lot of those manual setups have been taken apart and put back into as they probably should. So I think David does have a challenge sometimes with the staff that we have to create, to change that culture that was down there. And we have to reassign some folks to make better use of their time. So I think David's been good at working at that, but, um, it still needs some more work. I do think when you have coming year, when you look at staff and levels, and we look at personnel, other than remain aside, reassigning folks, we love need to look at how to supplement the folks that we have. Maybe do consultants on a project basis, or we actually bring some folks on full time that will help us achieve those goals.
Doc, I have two questions, because I got to move, we're getting, we've got more items. What was the percentage of what Liberty was mentioned, that it would amp up the wastewater treatment facility, thirty percent?
Seventeen and a half.
I'm sorry?
The current figure is seventeen and a half.
Do, do you, I can bring to the council a resolution to activate the dry line systems in San Mateo Choya Estancia Candy Bridge, and you're suggesting that they would be activated as soon as possible, is that what the recommendation is?
With, within the timeframe that's necessary to get it all together and put the design together, make sure the pipelines are capable of transferring material where it's picked up, down to the plant, these types of things, but yes.
The, the other, in addition to what you're saying, Doctor, the other reason is to give the citizens that warning, because there's one of the, that's, that's, is in here, is that a realistic time?
I mean, given, because we don't like it up in the...
We're, we're kind of talking about two different things here. We're talking about the Liberty Utilities buy-in, which delivers seventeen and a half percent more wastewater up through the downtown section and the Rancho Manana Water Station. And then on the flip side of that, we also have a trunk main that has to be designed to catch the dry sewered areas down in, in there, the, where you live. That design and construction process is easily, at least a year-long process for the dry sewer portion, but that is independent of the Liberty Utilities.
No, I understand, I'm separating the two. I'm just looking at the two as possible solutions to handle the flow into the wastewater.
They're, they're both absolutely viable, the trunk main down in the neighborhood, debt is part of the wastewater master plan, it's been looked at way before the Liberty thing even came to light.
Let me go around here real quickly, Counselor. Can you explain and answer your question? I don't, didn't hear it asked. The, that infrastructure tie-in is what percentage of capacity?
I would say, I think that adds about three hundred or so homes. It's probably somewhere on the order of, it's, it's over a million dollars in construction for the trunk main. It is as low capacity, we're probably looking somewhere on the order of about fifteen percent.
So is it over, or he might have a seventeen plus fifteen percent?
Right.
Counselor, if I were you, have a question, you have a Counselor in Monica, I'm going to need to move.
I, I want to be a little cautious, because we're putting Peter and David on the spot here, with questions that may get us ahead of the process. They have to put together a unified plan to bring to us. I think we can set some policies, we can say, we want you to move forward, but I want to be careful about how we're getting into the solutions that they are better at putting together than we might think up in our heads. They are professionals, we set policies, and I want to be very careful that we're not getting that.
Counselor Monica, you have a question?
Thank you, Major, just a final comment. I agree with Dr. Allen, this thing hasn't been maintained for years and years, and we can't fix it overnight, okay? But there are some things that we can do quickly, and I think we should do quickly. This backwash recovery system has an immediate payback, okay? Now, if we have to hire somebody, a professional somebody, to come in and put the automated, whatever it is in, okay, and, and train the staff in it, I think that person would be here next week, right? Now, we spend a whole bunch of time on fixing leaks. If we outsourced this and we hired a contractor, pick a number, a hundred fifty thousand, a hundred seventy thousand, whatever it is, okay? Put in something like two thousand feet of pipe, okay? Somebody else is doing the work, and by the way, I don't think we have the equipment to do the work anyway, no, we can't do the work, okay? So now things are happening in parallel, things are happening, um, and we're getting things done, but I don't know. I'm, I'm looking for deliverables, I'm looking for fixes, and I think there's a number of things that we can do concurrently.
Could there, is, is public comment on this agenda item, does anyone?
Can I just make one comment that, that, to, to take off where Counselor Monica went?
Can I just make one comment to take off where Councilman Monica went?
The council, by the way, this is not an action item. This is a discussion item.
That's exactly right. This in no way was to be specific instructions for staff on how to move forward. It's identifying major issues that can be tackled. And talking about the sewer plant, the Liberty Utilities proposal that's been sent to the town, and I haven't seen it, but generally, that's money into the town. That does not cost the town money to get that seventeen and a half percent, as far as I know. They want to become customers. In talking to the people in Carefree, the staff there, that plant is going away at the Boulders. That sewage is going away. The Boulders are being sold and that thing's going to be shut down. So there's a limited window to grab that. And if it doesn't come here, it's going to Scottsdale. So that's not like taking the dry sewer neighborhoods, which will require capital on the part of the town to hook those homes up. Liberty Utilities, I don't believe is going to require capital on part of the town. Correct me if I'm wrong, guys on the staff. That's money into the town. So those are the kind of things that you can do right away. The backwash thing, we should not be flushing a hundred and twenty million gallons. That, you know, that's money, you probably already spent most of the money if you bought the pump. So as Dr. Allen said, this thing is a couple-year plan, but it can be done without ruining the finances of the town and causing undue stress to the staff.
Mr. Morris?
Well, I'm speaking now as a citizen and not as a member of the committee. So I would urge the council to examine the priorities. I'm in favor of sidewalks. I'm in favor of town art. I'm in favor of restriping schoolhouse road. I'm more in favor of having my water on. There's a series on now where the winter is coming. We had a code red last summer. We're in jeopardy right now at the lift station because, all because of lack of maintenance. It brings the second wave. These are all symptoms. The problem is management. All problems ultimately come down to management. The priorities ought to be high. The management accountability should be high to match the priority and the jeopardy that the town is in. And finally, urgency. The critical parts need urgent action. The other day I was at a meeting and we couldn't spend our eighty thousand dollars for marketing. But we can spend two hundred thousand dollars on five catastrophic pump failures that were preventable. We can't get an engineer, but we can spend two hundred thousand dollars on failures that should have been prevented. People do it every day. We don't want code reds. We don't want loisueeds in the ground. I think it's time for dramatic direction from the council to get the resources, to identify those resources, to get them allocated to getting the easy parts of this problem solved now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Everett Valley, fifty-one eleven East Desert Hills Road. Fourteen-year citizen of... Tonight, as a citizen, I want to do a couple of three things. First, I want to thank the staff in this town for their diligence and for their commitment identifying the issues that have been brought to us tonight. Second, I'd like to thank the Water Advisory Committee for your hard work and diligence in putting together this report, the work you've done with the staff, the details you've assembled and the information that you've provided to us as citizens. I want to thank the council for your time. You've set aside the better part of probably an hour to listen to this, to hear the input from the committee. You made the time available and thank you for doing that. As a citizen, I recognize that there is nothing more important to us as citizens than our water. It is desert gold. No water, no community. No water, no council. No water, no business. It is extremely important and we've set some goals. We've set some planning in place. Yes, I could sit here and pontificate about some ideas, but that's not my place tonight. One other thing our citizens need to know. This information has been presented tonight. And because I seriously believe that every citizen in this town needs to know this, respectively, I'm asking you, the Sonoran News, to print these documents, to print this information verbatim so that the citizens well know. And I appreciate it that you do that. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
West Cooper, Cave Creek resident. I live in one of these communities, well, first of all, let me echo Mr. Bell's comments to staff and committee and council. But I live in one of these communities with a dry sewer system there. And I spent thirty thousand dollars to install a septic system because that dry sewer system was not connected in. And if you're thinking of imposing our developments into the sewer system and us to foot the cost for connectivity and then on top of that, the waste processing fee on a monthly basis for a system that I've got twenty years' useful life expectancy on, that parks up the wrong tree. I've lived in areas where septic systems had failed and municipalities were forced to install sewage collection systems. You bring these developments in on an age-related basis when you can expect septic systems to start failing and then tie them into the waste management system. It would be a lot easier selling point, I think. Because you're looking at maybe fifteen percent addition to the sewer plant by forcing the three developments on to that waste management volume right now. And that's not all that much, but if you get down to an age-related transfer process, makes a lot more sense. It's a lot more viable and sensible to people. Thank you.
Let me take it, Mr. Cooper. What I would suggest, like, we stop up here and that council is going to take a recess. One is a member of the, the Water Committee, make sure you're on the Budget Committee, the Citizens' Budget Committee, which will be given to me. Secondly, I want to thank Mr. Geiger personally for preparing that letter for my signature. It's now out in the mail to the citizens. Ensuring everybody in the community that you never had any contemplation of clogging up water to Rancho Minana. The other is the most obvious. Prior to all of us getting here, there was quite an advanced Native American Indian civilization of Hockum that did terrorist farming in Nanacatuck. And they thrived here in many ways from nine hundred to twelve hundred. And then one day in twelve hundred, they were here and then they weren't here. No one quite knows why, but what is suspected is the water ran out. Council's going to go into a five-minute recess here and then...